We'll move on to item number seven. It's a study session. Receive report on the trash receptacles and newspaper rack enclosures on San Mateo Avenue and provide direction to staff, city manager.
Good afternoon, council. This presentation will be provided by Jimmy Tan, our public works director. But I just want to provide a brief introductory comment. So throughout the presentation, you will see the cost of various trash receptacles, as well as the cost of the newspaper racks. As hard as it is, what I want to say is, don't center on the cost. There are sometimes a several hundred dollar difference, if not a thousand dollar difference between some of the various receptacles. However, we do know that there are grant funds that can fund the recycling portion, and we are looking for grants to fund the other portions. Also, the current trash cans have been there for over thirty years. And so, a few hundred dollar difference between one trash can or the other, I don't want you to sort of center on the price and have that be the highest factor that you weigh. It's really the aesthetics of our downtown, the usability and maintenance of that trash can. And there are a number of various versions, I think a total of nine, that we will talk about. And with that intro, I'll turn it over to our public works director, Jimmy Tan.
Great. Thank you, city manager. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Public Works Director Jimmy Tan have a brief presentation on this item tonight. The objective of the presentation is to provide to the city council information on the proposed trash receptacles and newspaper racks enclosure, and to obtain feedback and direction from council tonight. The agenda for tonight's presentation is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the adopted San Mateo Avenue's conceptual streetscape plan, then discuss the criteria used to select the trash receptacles, and show some available options, then share some examples of newspaper racks enclosures, and lastly, you know, staff's recommendations and next steps, then questions. As for the background, the city council adopted the San Mateo Avenue's conceptual streetscape plan on October twenty-second, twenty nineteen, which determined the vision for the city's downtown corridor. The plan evaluated the San Mateo Avenue corridor from El Quino to Huntington Avenue near Artichoke Joe's, and was developed through a community engagement process. The plan included design guidelines to create an inviting downtown atmosphere for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. It also included recommendations to beautify and enhance San Mateo Avenue. As a conceptual plan, this document is to be used as a guide for the next steps of the design process, while leaving flexibility for future implementation. Of course, the ultimate design will depend on the project budget once funding is identified. The plan assessed the existing conditions, then provided recommendations for improvement. Some of the proposed improvements includes new sidewalk paving, public art spaces, improved planting, storm water management features, lighting, wayfinding signage, and gateways. And one of the recommended improvements included the replacement of the trash receptacles, and then possibly, and then also including the installation of the guards around the newspaper racks. So currently, existing trash receptacle looks like the one, the picture that you see on the bottom right-hand corner. It's old, as the city manager mentioned. It's made out of concrete, and it's in dire need of replacement. So the information on this slide was taken directly from the streetscape plan, and although, you know, the plan recommended to replace the trash receptacles, it didn't really go into detail in terms of the criteria to select the receptacles. As you see on it, you know, the pictures on the right, you know, showed just two pictures, you know, the one trash and then one recycling receptacle. The receptacles are proposed to be stainless steel, but no other information was provided in the document. So prior to the selection of the receptacles, staff determined the criteria, you know, as noted on the slide, staff determined, oh, staff discussed with recology to determine the capacity, and they mentioned that the minimum capacity shall be, you know, thirty-two gallons. And staff also was interested in having a receptacle with a lid and cover to prevent any rainwater going to the can. Maintenance is also of concern for both recology and the city. For recology, doors with the lids must be easily accessible where their staff to retrieve the waste. For city staff, we're interested in having a receptacle that's easily maintainable. Having a stainless steel receptacle that's proposed in a streetscape plan would create maintenance issues if it's stained. Also, staff is interested in receptacles that are, that can be easily maintained. In addition, staff look for receptacles in a material that is fire, rust, and stain resistant, and the design that prevents graffiti from being etched, you know, onto these receptacles. So here are just, you know, several options that staff found that met the criteria. Staff shared the options with recology. They don't have any preference on the design, and are more focused on the ease of access to retrieve the waste. So the common theme that we're, is that we're not proposing any stainless steel receptacles. As you can see here, all of the receptacles have lids on top, except for number two, which does come with the lid, but it's not shown. Also, the design will prevent graffiti. So receptacles one through five are similar with slats design. Numbers one and two are very common, you know, in other downtown, you know, areas, you know, go to Burlingame, or, you know, St. Carlos, and you see very similar receptacles as number one and two variations there. And it's also used in a lot of the parks settings as well. Our receptacles, you know, six through nine are a bit different with no slats. Number seven is currently being used at Earl Glenview Park. Number eight is a variation of number seven with wood exterior instead of all steel. Number nine, it's a big belly receptacle. It's solar powered, to let staff know when the trash is ready for disposal, and also has a trash packed component. And the unit's advantage is that it can be, it can reduce the number of collection, thus, you know, reducing the cost. So these are just, you know, some of the more detailed information for the trash receptacles here. This is streetscape plastic, then, you know, very highly common, commonly used in several downtown areas, as I mentioned before. This is the other receptacles here, the Dumar, which is another commonly used in park settings as well as downtown areas. This is a diamond receptacle. The Arctic. And then the terrace. The embossed. And then the Dumar, which is the, which is what we're currently using at Earl Glenview Park. This one comes in a variety of different colors as shown on the slide here as well, and then also the variations that you, I mentioned from, this is the seal versus the, you know, the seal and wood combination as well. And this, again, the big belly is, this is the most expensive unit. You know, it's about four thousand dollars per unit to purchase. And it's, you know, it's, you know, a lot of agencies have this, you know, Milbury actually has, have big bellies, you know, in their downtown quarter as well. So as for the newspaper racks, you know, they're also in dire need of replacement and possibly some sort of enclosure surrounding for aesthetics. The city doesn't own the newspaper racks. The city has a total of five locations in a downtown area where the racks currently exist, and the list of locations are located on the slide there. And some of these locations may not need enclosure, you know, as the newspaper racks up or against the wall of some businesses. The picture that you see on our, on the slide here is of the racks, you know, adjacent to, or right in front of us, the Starbucks, you know. So, you know, putting in the closure may not be necessary in those locations. But staff will evaluate each, you know, location detail as well, as any ADA issues related to the installation of any enclosures. And staff will also coordinate with any, with the newspaper companies prior to the replacement of these newspaper racks. So the cost to replace the racks enclosure at each location is approximately six thousand dollars. The picture on the right that you see there is from Milbury, in their downtown quarter, where the newspaper racks are partially closed. City of Burlingame actually has something similar to this in their downtown as well. Staff reached out to the vendor that created the design and manufacturing enclosure for Milbury, and some of these patterns are from the manufacturer, the architect that is shown on the slide as well. And multiple patterns can be made, and sample patterns are shown here. But, you know, if the city is interested in, you know, having our own design, additional costs, you know, there are some additional costs with the non-stagger patterns, but it can vary depending on the complexity of the design as well. So for tonight, staff has recommended to replace both the trash receptacles and newspaper racks, along with installation of enclosure and seeking council's input on the design options. The total cost or the budget is about eighty-six thousand dollars, and the estimated cost for the receptacles is about fifty-six thousand, and the newspaper racks with enclosure is about thirty thousand dollars. As for the next steps, we'd like to, you know, identify the model of the trash receptacles and allocate a budget to place them, and that's pretty much it. So that concludes my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Tan, for those comments, and let's turn it back to the, if you take the shared screen down, please. Thank you kindly. City manager, do you have any other final comments before I go to council? You're on mute.
Sure. We neglected to mention that tonight's action is just a study session for the city council to provide design direction on the type of trash receptacle, as well as the appropriate approach for newsstands. We will come back to the city council with a funding plan and an implementation plan with timing, once we get direction. In addition, on that slide where you saw the nine options, it's worth pointing out that while staff is not providing a recommendation, we do want to highlight that options one through five all have slats, and there is a test or a pilot of option one in front of Starbucks. It is a trash receptacle and a recycling receptacle. It is currently, as of today, suffering from some dilapidation, and that the top, the tops are broken off, as well as trash becomes trapped in between the slats when the van is, when the interior thirty-two gallon can is taken out to be disposed of. And so it does create one and unsightly issue and a constant maintenance issue. And so council should think of that aesthetic-wise when you're looking at options one through five, because all of those have varying versions of a see-through feature where trash can be trapped.
Thank you. I was kind of looking, I don't raise my hand, I was having a hard time. Before I open it to my colleagues, just so we're, I guess you mentioned the Starbucks. To give some history, there was the time that it was like, let's get two trash cans, one for recycling, one for regular trash, and then see how they operate, how the durability is as similar where we wanted to go. The concern, and then I'll open it to my colleagues, is it seems from then till now that it is not, recyclables don't just go in the recyclable. Hence, it is then contaminated, and it becomes trash. And so that's, that's not of a value, if we're spending so much money on something that we're not going to be able to use the value of what it's supposed to be for, and it ends up being contaminated. So are we looking at just trash receptacles, or are we talking recyclable, are we talking both, or what's the thought on that?
Sure. Can I ask Director Tan to put up the slide of the version that is at Earl Glenview Park? Because we purposely put another option for the recycling container that has a circle cutout for bottles or other recycling bottles, just to further denote that, the difference. And you can actually see it better on number eight, because it has a more aerial view of the wood version. So next slide. So if the council wanted to build a different model, this is common, to help with the commingling of recycling and trash.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get, kind of so we're all on the same page on what we're going down the path on. And then first is Vice Mayor Medina, then Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes, thank you. This has been a long time coming. I recall the mayor and I on a subcommittee meeting and going through a bunch of these models, and we got to a certain point, and nothing else happened after we got those receptacles there at Starbucks. So, so thank you for moving forward with this. I did go look at the Glenview can, and it's, it's nice looking. Do we have any other cities using that model? Because it seems to be holding up fairly well at a, at a park, where not too many people are kind of hammering it, and where, so that's my first question. Do we have any, any references on how they're performing with that can on a downtown or city street? The mayor had a question that I was asking. So are we proposing to put two cans at each location now, where there's currently one? As for the newspaper racks, I did send a question in about, you know, are they necessary to have them? And I'd like to share that with the public when, when staff responds. But my suggestion there would be, have we checked, or the question there is, have we checked with the newspaper publishers to see if they really are interested? Because a number of those rack container, or those racks have nothing in them, and are being used by a few people, or one person to store articles, personal articles during the day. So if we could maybe not have as many, today, I get my daily journal from one of the, one of the businesses there at Grand Leader, it has it there. So having staff check with the newspaper publishers to make sure that they really even want them anymore, and then who has to pay for it? One of the questions I asked, I think it's important for our community, and I know I get this question quite a bit, is who maintains the garbage cans? Who services the garbage cans? How much does it cost? How frequently are they picked up? And why are they overflowing on the weekends? Those are my questions.
City staff?
Would you like me to take that on, city manager?
Go ahead, Director Tan.
Would you like me to stop sharing, so I can see?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. So a couple of questions that were raised here. See, the first one, you know, whether or not the cans at the Glenview or Glenview are being used in downtown areas. You know, I've been to several downtowns here within the peninsula, and most of the ones that I've seen are the first, you know, options one and two. They're very common, you know, in St. Carlos, you know, San Mateo, and Burlingame actually. The ones in Milbury, as I mentioned, you know, they're using big belly, but other parts of areas, like in front of the Walgreens in Milbury, they're using, you know, very similar to, you know, the receptacle that's shown on item number one. It seems like that's more common in the other downtowns that I've seen, that I've been to. But who knows? I can, we can check with the manufacturers to see whether they sold it to other, you know, other city agencies and that they're using, you know, within their downtown or not. The second question is related to the newspaper racks. Yeah, definitely, I think, you know, I was out there this morning, opening every single, looking through every single one of them, to see whether it was filled or not. And you're correct, not a lot of the bins are filled, and there are multiple locations that are just, you know, especially, like, you know, Holland has some on two bins on their side at Process Street and Starbucks, you know, there's like eight bins there, right? And then you have the, you know, in front of Big Joe's, you know, it's like, you know, multiple bins there, and then the West Coast Cafe actually has multiple bins there as well. So, you know, we'll definitely coordinate with the newspaper companies, especially if we're going to be, you know, replacing all of these, you want to make sure that we'll put it in the right spot, and not have too many bins, you know, along the entire downtown corridor here. The regards to the last question about, you know, who services the can, the garbage, recology is the one that services the garbage, and they do that on a daily basis. They do it five days, and it's part of their franchise agreement that they maintain that for the city. I think those are the three questions. Did I miss anything? I'm sorry.
Yeah, one question for, are we intending to put two cans at each can location?
That's correct, yes.
Is that the direction? You're asking for us to provide that direction, or do you have a recommendation on that?
The recommendation is to put two cans, because, you know, we want to have some sort of recycling component in each location, because, you know, otherwise, you know, you have a, you know, a mix, a contamination between recycle and garbage. So the thought is to have two cans at every location.
Okay. And one last, one clarification, clarifying question. So recology is doing it five days a week, but if there was a way to get them to skip a weekday and do it during the weekend, because it, from Saturday to Sunday, the bins fill up pretty heavily. I was there this week, this, this last weekend, and various weekends. There are people who are, I guess it's better that they're using the cans instead of throwing it on the street, but having some service looked into on the weekend, which probably is more expensive, which is probably why it's not happening, I'm guessing. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that.
City manager, you had your hand up, maybe you had some comment on that?
Yeah, I think there was another question from Councilmember Medina, and that was, who owns the newspaper racks?
That's right.
And so, Director Tan, will you take that?
The newspaper racks are owned by the newspaper, you know, you know, agencies, and there's, you know, according to our city's municipal code, you know, they are the ones that are supposed to provide the maintenance of these newspaper racks.
And cities that want a different aesthetic look typically pay and replace them, and so that's exactly what happened in Burlingame, in the example we showed. So if you want newer newspaper racks, typically it's the municipal agency that funds it, and then you have to provide them back to the newspaper companies.
Okay, and by the way, those screens look fine. I'm okay with, they're all pretty nice looking, so if we could perhaps reduce the number of racks, and checking with them, and then putting the screens up, I would, I would be interested in improving the appearance for those that need it with the screens.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So our vice mayor was very methodical in going through most of my questions and asking them, so my list is not nearly as long as it was a minute ago. One, one general comment I want to make is to, is to thank staff for bringing, for bringing this to us. I have been advocating for a long time that we use this, use the streetscape plan as a, as a menu, and start moving forward with small changes to downtown, knowing that, you know, we don't have twenty million dollars lying around to implement the entire program, but there are small changes that we can make to show our merchants and to show our residents that we are committed to improving downtown, and this is a, this is a step in that direction, and I really, really appreciate it. Going to the, to this, the specifics, the, look, one thing I would like us to consider as far as, you know, giving staff direction and things to, things to look at, since this is a study session, is perhaps not saying that they have, we have to have the exact same design at every spot along the avenue. Specifically, you know, when you look at the big belly, you know, advocating for having, having, how many, how many total was it? There's forty-something. Having forty-something big bellies up and down the avenue does not sound very fiscally responsible. However, I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't be too difficult of a study, asking recology who's picking this up, if there are particular locations that tend to overflow really, really rapidly. And, and perhaps just get a handful, a small handful of big bellies just for those locations, since they can handle so much more capacity and, you know, with compaction and all of that. You know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, you know, aesthetically revolting to have, you know, have a couple of big bellies here and there, and then a whatever design that we agree on everywhere else. That's something to consider. I did appreciate, I had sent the question in advance, a similar question to what our vice mayor asked about the, the numbers of newspaper racks, and the response was that, you know, that in some locations, there's, there's more newspapers are putting their, putting their publications there, and some it's less, so if we can coordinate with them to, you know, try to reduce the number of empty ones, as, as the vice mayor said, I would be in favor of that. Regarding the enclosures, I like all the designs there, too. Not knowing what the additional cost would be for a custom pattern, it would be, you know, it would be kind of cool to have something San Bruno-y, you know, something incorporating a large heart or something like that in the, in the design, you know, might be, might be aesthetically pleasing for downtown, but it would depend on the cost. But, you know, any of the, any of the designs that we see there, I like the, I especially like the one that looks like trees, but it looks like Milbury's doing that one, so maybe we don't want to copy, but who knows? Then, lastly, the, I do like the idea of, you know, it's a, this is, so I guess this is the first actual question. The, if we're going to do two cans, will the recycling can always have the small lid, no matter which of the options that we choose? It would have the small opening for the recycling?
That's an option that the city council can decide. We can go with that format. The benefit of going with that format is that there's some uniformity, and there's a visual denotation that this one is, this is for recycling, in addition to the words that would be placed there. But it's a house.
Yeah, and I would recommend as well, so I would, I would recommend that, because that's, you know, that is typical for a recycling bin, that it's, you know, it's a small opening to discourage people from shoving large things in there that don't belong in there. And I would also recommend that any, any, with any design we choose, that if the, if the entire fixture can't be the recycling blue, that at least there'd be some component on there that's the recycling blue, as a visual cue for people to put their things in the right place. Excuse me. My last, my last comment is, it might be out of scope, but it, but it's certainly related, and I don't know, I don't know exactly what we can do about it, but it is a concern. I have observed on many, many occasions, business owners walking their garbage out to these cans, and not utilizing their own, their own trash pickups. And I don't know what can be done about that, but I figured, since we're talking about trash cans, that I would bring it up. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from my colleagues, and if anybody from the public wishes to speak, if you could raise your hand, and we'll go to, right now, Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, sir. So I had, my question is about the, the garbage cans that were placed at what used to be Posey Park, and the ones that we have in front of the Rec Center. Were those deemed to be cost prohibitive, or, it seems like the material is pretty sturdy, probably more sturdy than steel, withstand the weather a lot better. On a few clean sweep events, and I was assigned to go downtown and paint the old garbage cans, and a coat of paint was, it wasn't covered. I mean, it was, they were just so rusty and dented and broken, that, you know, it seems like steel, it, it's not, you know, it may be good for a while, but for the long haul, it seems like the, the concrete type material seems to be perhaps more sturdy, and I like the way those are molded with the city logo on them, so they look, they look really nice. So I'm just wondering if those were not considered at all for this next phase?
Right, so we did use a lot of those, as you mentioned, Councilmember Salazar, in the, like, the park settings, and those are concrete, as you mentioned, material, and I think, can't remember the cost right now, it could be about two thousand dollars or twenty-five, hundred dollars for both, or it could be a little bit less. I know that, you know, we purchased several of them through the Calvary Um or it could be a little bit less. I I know that we know we we purchased um several of them through the uh the Cal recycle grant that we received. Um you know, and so and you know, that is an option, you know, if you know, it's on the table too. But I think we didn't consider that because you know, being you know, kind of in other downtown areas, majority of the downtowns, you know, have used um steel. Uh and um and then see, you know, those, the the ones in the um, you know. That we use at Posey Park and as well as the 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 you know, the rec center are, um you know, more of a park setting. So we decided that, you know, we kind of, we decided to use those there instead.
Okay. And do we have any idea in terms of uh just durability? Um you know, how do the materials compare? I mean, are we talking about, you know, if the steel ones have to be replaced every ten years and the concrete ones have to be replaced every twenty years? Um you know, clearly, there it's it's you you're getting a a better bargain. So I'm I'm just wondering if. A- and again, you know, looking at the condition of the ones we have, the the concrete portion of the old existing garbage cans seems to be pretty sturdy. Versus the the steel doors and the tops, which tend to get dented, scratched, rusted and everything else. So I mean, and any idea on the longevity of the materials?
Yeah, I know, I would say, you know, I would agree with you that this concrete would definitely last longer, um you know, over time. Because you know, it's it's more durable than than steel. And I just don't know how long the steel, you know, receptacles will last because I don't have much of an experience and I can, maybe that's. I can ask other agencies to see, you know, how often they actually, you know, have to go out there and replace their receptacles. I can, you know, I can I can do that. And then the concrete ones that we have, you know, at the park, you know, we've just, we've just started using, but it still looks like it's in a great, you know, shape. So far.
Okay, all right. And then just one comment regarding the uh the big bellies. I I know that um they generally have more of an application in areas that don't have regular pickups. And so the the advantage is that you let them fill up until they need to be emptied and then somebody gets dispatched to do it. In this case where we have regular daily pickups, it doesn't really make any sense because even if you're sending out alerts. You're not gonna pick up more than once. That's that really wouldn't make sense. So I know that they found some uh good applications in rural. Rural uh areas, uh parks, uh you know, that perhaps, you know, a ranger is responsible for picking up trash there. And so they wouldn't have to go out there on a regular basis. They would wait for the for the signal to come in and then they would go out and empty the trash. So I I don't think that they would make sense in this situation. That was it.
Okay, uh vice mayor, I know you're up next, but I wanted to uh allow council member Mason, since she hasn't had an opportunity yet. Hear from her, then I'll double check to see if there's anybody from the public and then come back.
Thank you. I I don't know if I, should I just ask all the questions at one time?
Sure, please.
So I just wanted to get clarity and and maybe I just missed it, but I know at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about how the streetscape plan. Um recommended stain the stainless steel. Um I'm just, I'm not stuck on stainless steel. I am just curious to know why we veered from stainless steel. It's the first question. Um the next question is um. Which I just want to make sure, since it's a study session, that we do look at the option of the cigarette butts um being somehow linked to the garbage or recycling cans. The third question is, um and uh vice mayor Medina kind of touched on it. But um I think Director Tan, you responded as far as the servicing of the trash cans. My understanding in speaking with a neighboring city is that um they're. One of their city departments actually takes the garbage cans every two weeks and actually power washes them. Um and it keeps them um clean and then it makes sure that obviously they're maintained and the longevity is better and they look, they look cleaner. So I want to make sure I follow up on that question to ask our, is our city staff, is recology, is anybody actually taking those garbage cans and power washing them? Uh outside of just the recology picking up the garbage on a daily basis. And then uh my next one is just really a suggestion and really thinking outside the box for the magazine stands. So in the staff report, it said that there were five um magazine stands. And it looks like the encroachment, we only really need if it's facing the street, but the ones facing the wall may may not be needed. I don't, I don't know how necessary it is since you're not gonna be able to see the the work, um you know, on the in the back. But I guess my question is, can we just rethink the way that we have magazine stands? I know in San Bruno, really, it's popular now. I think it's, it'll be popular later, but it's actually just building our own little, almost like little libraries. We can uh paint them how we want. They're very cute, very unique. I think they're, they have a lot of character to our downtown. Um and as opposed to having a magazine stand, that's just your standard magazine stand. Why couldn't the Daily Journal put their papers in, you know, customized, um almost like, I'm using Little Library as a reference, but a wooden box? Um and we could do that for definitely the the ones that aren't for, that are free. Because the ones obviously that aren't free have to use a magazine stand. But anyway, um just a suggestion. And I I don't, I don't know if our staff could build them. I know the ones I've seen around the city, we've volunteers have been building them. And then um my last question is just, I believe that uh council member Hamilton may may have already mentioned it. But um do we need the five magazine stands? I mean, how how many do we need or do we need them in the locations they're at? So maybe instead of, maybe we could keep the five, but we put one in, you know, near the, near Centennial Park or near Posey Park. Where someone could sit down and we encourage, you know, people sit down and read a a magazine and use those benches. Um so just a, just a suggestion. I know, I should say there's one in front of Centennial Park now because West Coast Cafe is there, but maybe one in front of like Posey Park. Um so just some thoughts and questions. Thank you.
Any staffs?
Great, thank you. Um do my best here to try to answer all their um questions, council member Mason. Um first one, you mentioned, uh why do we veer away from the stainless steel, um you know, trash receptacles from the the streetscape plan? Uh we thought that, you know, after talking to our maintenance personnel, we believe that, you know, stainless steel, you know, if if people, you know, start throwing trash into the receptacles. Sometimes they, you know, may tend to fall out or they miss and it's, it could stain the um, you know, the exterior of that. So there'd be more maintenance involved, probably more power washing that needs to be done, you know, to the uh the stainless steel, you know, to get the, you know, the um, the dirt out. So we thought, you know, having a block, um you know, receptacles would be a little bit easier um aesthetically. Uh you know, not have to do as much maintenance uh as as would require for stainless steel. Um so that's my response to that. Now regards to these cigarette butts. Currently, right now, you know, we, you know, none of the options presented haven't, you know, um the cigarette butt option. But you know, if that, you know, that's an interest in some, some, something that the city, you know, staff can uh look into. To see whether any of the receptacles actually provides any uh options uh to um include some, you know, cigarette butts uh or not. So that's something that we can uh look into as well. See, servicing the trash cans um for um power washing. You know, I I can talk to our staff. I don't believe that, you know, staff are actually taking a garbage can, you know, out and then and and then power washing. Uh the the garbage cans and then and bringing it back to the uh the site. That's not being done. I don't think ecology is doing that a- as well. Because they're just picking up the garbage and then they're just, you know, um you know, servicing that um the waste uh for the city. So um so I can, I can talk to the staff a little more to see whether, you know, that's being done or not. Magazine uh stands, um you know, I think, and there's plenty of options that are available, but most of the ones that we've seen are. Are metal. Uh that's what a lot of the um agencies are using, but if if there's an interest to have wooden boxes. Um you know, in certain locations, you know, that's something that can be uh looking, looked at. Uh but not, yeah, I just don't know. We'll probably have to have somebody act that actually, you know, makes it for the city. It depends on the design as well. So we have to, you know, there's more evaluation that needs to be done. If there's an interest to look at other types of um boxes, you know, for um the magazine stands. And the locations, you know, you mentioned about whether, you know, we need um magazine stands at, you know, uh other locations. That's some, that's something that we can evaluate right now because, you know, as I, you know, mentioned a little bit earlier, and there's a lot of the locations that have empty boxes. Uh right now, so maybe if there's a way for us to combine them and, yeah, you know, you put one in Posey Park, as you mentioned. Uh that we don't currently have one. I know that Centennial Park uh with West Coast Cafe being close by, you know, there have, there's two boxes there. Um and you know, we we we'll definitely have to evaluate e- each individual locations again before we proceed with the replacement.
Okay, and then um just as a follow up and I want to be clear, I'm not um trying to create more work. No, we don't, I don't think we need more magazine racks. I think it's just, I'm, what I'm just suggesting is either condense them or look at where they are. And maybe, you know, where would be the nice location to have them or the, where they're gonna be maximized. Yeah, so thank you. And then um uh one, just one last note, I just had. I guess as we're thinking like uh towards implementing the streetscape plan, we don't have design guidelines necessarily. But I'm looking at like the aperture building and then how Artichoke Joe's, I think that the um update that they're doing to their building. Kind of matches the aperture in some ways from, I remember when I was on the planning commission. And then on one eleven Huntington, they have some wood in their design. So when we're looking at the the can, the these cans and this is for you or for the city manager, should we be thinking also? Of what these future buildings are gonna look like?
City manager?
Sure, um I would say absolutely, but uh more importantly, what our future street furniture and streetscape will look like. Because we are setting the tone uh through this acquisition and and installation on whatever design we pick. Because we're gonna want complimentary uh street furniture, be they replacing the light holes at some point. Adding uh street benches or 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 other bicycle racks to be complimentary. Uh and and Director Tan is exactly right. We went away from stainless steel because we wanted a darker color, not necessarily black. Uh due to uh the a a a decreased maintenance and concern about graffiti on stainless steel. Uh and 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 constantly having to clean that. Councilmember, you did mention a couple of other things that I wanted to address. One was the enclosure. Absolutely, when a newspaper rack faces the building, we would potentially just do an enclosure on either side. Not necessarily waste um resources and put an enclosure at the back. With regard to a wooden newspaper or or magazine rack or other varying racks. One of the concepts was really to decrease the clutter uh and have one stand that's bounded by the enclosure. It's also important to note that the newspaper racks, whether they are free or paid, actually have free speech protection. And we have to provide a reasonable access. And so when we look at decreasing the number of rack of of newspaper. Sort of individual boxes, we may have one that is a eight gang box, but only four are taken. We may not wanna just make that four because if someone else comes along, they may have the ability to put their plastic or whatever their. Their stand looks like right next to ours. So we wanna, we may wanna allow for some flexibility. Um but certainly, it seems like we have too many out there and we can go through the process of decreasing. But part of the plan, especially because our sidewalks are relatively narrow, was to have sort of a decrease in street furniture. And and contain the newspaper uh stands in s- in sort of one area versus having sort of. Very, I I'm sure you've seen them elsewhere where there's one stand and then there may be a number of of other individual stands uh next, next door to that.
Okay, uh thank you, city manager. Uh is there anyone from the community that wishes uh to speak? You know, I had asked for hands and I was gonna check in after council member Mason, not seeing any, we will then uh keep it with city council. Uh close that and bring it to, back to Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so. Just wanted to follow up on on some of the other co- comments from my colleagues. Whatever grants we can get, of course, that's a a high priority and 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 I, I'm sure staff is really good at that, has has been exhibited of late. The option, if not to have cigarette butts incorporated or cups or containers in within the the garbage container. But um there's still a lot of people that smoke and that are just throwing their cigarette butts in on the gutter. It's just, that's where, that's where they finally wind up. And if we could ask staff to to also look into some additional cigarette. But containers, I know there's one kind of over by Knowles and Starbucks and then one over at Artichoke Joe's. So if if we're gonna do a little bit looking around, if we can maybe see something that. Wouldn't take too much time to see what's available, um to put those out so that people hopefully will. Will not throw them in the gutter. I I I believe uh the cost on the big belly, after talking with uh some friends in Millbrae. That the costs have come down, not substantially, but they have operating, operation data of showing that it is cost efficient. So as uh council member Hamilton said, um having a few in in some locations um that are heavily used. Um and maybe um. We'll, we'll see how that that goes. I I I I know that uh. Uh Mayor Medina and I asked uh to see if maybe Starbucks would be willing to uh to pay for. A big belly by their store since since they're uh, they generate a lot of disposable cups. So um those, those are my things uh of what I've heard from from my colleagues. And uh again, thank you. Um this is, this is a step in the right direction. And a- as council, council member Hamilton said, we don't need, we could, we can pursue this à la carte. Of what we can afford and making these improvements and and looking forward to uh this discussion in further depth. During our priority session meeting uh this upcoming weekend. So uh thank you all for for your attention.
Um a few things for myself is that the streetscape's plan and city manager can correct me, but it was adopted in a phased element. And it was phased out because of that that factor. So you could do phase one, phase two, phase three. There was a dollar amount of set aside because obviously not, it all could not be done at once. So this is what that plan uh was adopted and what it is doing. On on the Posey Park, the picture that the city manager showed us, I saw that the trash receptacle and the recycling receptacle were not side by side. Because to me, if one fills, I think, I'm sorry, but a person is just gonna say, well, at least it's not on the ground. My my concern again for the recycling is it's contaminated. And we know that that's been a high cost that has occurred for our city is when uh they're going to people's homes and they've contaminated the recycling. And that is what is up the price um uh to our contracts. The other thing is on the cigarette butts, um I see them on the poles and I think maybe, maybe they're more at high level, not sure if they see them. Um but I, connecting a cigarette butt next to the trash receptacle. Or, you know, I don't know, I think uh smoldering heat next to the crash could be good, bad, but if it doesn't make it into the right spot. We've got a, we've got a can fire potentially. Um I I I share some of the same issues of do we need all the newspaper racks? You know, we have to have them and I and I do appreciate that, you know, maybe at the time that we're doing that. Um unless we've already gone through it, maybe we review our practice. We're owning them. Uh and we're responsible where before it was the other way around. And if we cited it, it's supposed to come down. It has to be held for so long because we didn't purchase it. So I would think if we change that, that we have them in the rest of the community. Do we need to modify our ordinance uh on municipal code for that? I think lids are are important. I'm I'm worried about durability. So, you know, like the ones at Posey Park. How have they held up and durable? Does the crew see that it's contaminated in the recycling? Do they take care of the recycling? Or is that um recology? Uh o- over Glenview Earl, are those uh, you know, hasn't been a long time, but how are they holding up? One thing that uh the former vice mayor I bear and I had done when we went to go new lights in Amity Avenue, we picked a few spots. Where the wind factor came to make sure they had durability and they could last, uh because that was the the problem with the initial ones. Is the, the wind and the elements out there got to them. So I know you've heard a lot from us. And you know, uh Mr. Hamilton had talked about uh maybe if it's not too, if it's not too out of line with price. Maybe you have a little something uh unique to San Bruno on its side for the newspaper racks. But again, if it's cost prohibitive, then then I I I get it. So um city manager, um any final thoughts, comments or feedback?
Yeah, yeah, so uh I'm gonna um try and push the city council to give us a little bit clearer direction because um. There there've been a lot of comments and questions and I know that this has been a a a a very long. Uh project to uh study and test and the the pilot trash can that's uh in San. It's out in front of Starbucks has been there, uh I think, almost over two and a half years. And so uh what I don't want us to do is uh. and a half years. And so what I don't want us to do is to not get, leave here with clear direction, and we're going on a bit of a analysis to analyze the durability of all the nine cans that, that we proposed, and, and coming back with a, with a, with a host of, of, of answers, and then potentially have more questions. What, what we had hoped was to sort of narrow down to if not a trash receptacle, a, one or two trash receptacles, come back to the City Council during budget time with our analysis on how we would fund it, and then run as fast as we can towards implementation. And so if I can have Director Tan put up the nine options that we provided.
Yeah. Could you put up slide, slide number seven, receptacle options? It gives nine at a visual together, and that would be excellent.
And, and so let's, let's take, and, and let's do full screen. And let's take first off, sort of, number one is what we have in front of Starbucks, number, and number two is very similar to that. And number two comes with a lid. I, I think we've articulated the challenges, and we frankly see the challenges with number one in our community. And so why don't I pose the question of council options one or two? Are you, are you maybe interested in us pursuing that model further?
You know, and I really can't see everybody. Okay, I, I can see Mr. Hamilton. Thank you, sir. That helps. I, I don't know, it does. Okay, I'm just broadening the screen. If there's anybody thumbs up for one and two, just go ahead and put your, so I can see it in the screen, the City Manager can.
Okay. So I see no, I see no yeses on one or two.
Okay. Is that fair, team? Okay.
Okay. And so now to options three, four, and five, which are, which are similar in that they have slats, albeit, you know, maybe a nice aesthetic design, but may have some of the challenges that we've experienced with, with number one. And I believe that all of these we can get in a recycling model that has a different sized top. So let's not let that be the deciding factor, and they come in multiple colors. But is there anything about options three, four, and five that the council would, would like to consider?
I can tell you, I don't care for three with that flat, because I think people will use it as for a cup holder. I think they'll sit on it. And so I like it where it's more curved. So I'm, I'm not a, a fan of three, the way that is looked and is for me.
I like five, but not the others.
I liked some of these until I heard the concern about the trash getting stuck in the slats, which makes perfect sense. And that's something that I had considered until I heard that. So I'm not a big fan of any of them because of that, because of the, the maintenance and, and how it will end up looking over time.
Would the vertical slats be as problematic as the horizontal slats? Or actually, the other way around. I, I know the, the vertical ones are a problem, but the horizontal slats equally as problematic?
That's staff question?
Yeah.
I don't know that I know the answer to that.
It, it seems like trash would be less likely to get stuck in the sideways slots. That's why I'm thinking five might be, if, if out of those, five might be the most, more practical.
And I think what happens more often, trash being stuck in the slots, is when the top comes off and the, the interior can is emptied, there's waste that falls in the interior. And because there are slats, you can see that, the waste. And so it, it's, it's a maintenance issue, which, which we know we have a challenge with that level of maintenance now, given our standard.
And, and with five, it looks like it has a door, so you could open it and clean the interior portion of it, versus the ones that are just cylinders.
That's true.
Yeah. I, I, um, I don't like any of the ones with covers. I just feel like I've seen way too many garbage cans overflow at this point. But I, I also like five. And I would just say three, I, I'm not really a fan of the design of three, but if we're gonna have the magazine encirclements, it actually reminds me as if they're matching a little bit. But I don't know, it's kind of weird. But, but my, I would pick five of the first five, but with no top.
I would pick five. I'm still feeling a top, but, but out of those three choices, five is the only one that I would pick.
Okay. I think the, the, the top is, I, I agree, Councilmember Mason, with, with, you know, the, the problems that we have with overflowing. But without the top, the rain gets in them as well. And it's just, and it just gets really gross in there.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Five would be, would be my second choice. We haven't got to my first choice, and I would like to, to not just give one, because if, if.
Oh, no. He's asking for a few.
Yeah. Okay. So, so it would be five of the first five, and it has to have a top, otherwise the rain gets in there and it just gets extra heavy and, and nasty. So.
So I'm kind of hearing from everybody, out of one through five, I'm seeing that five has made it to the next round. And now we're gonna move to six through nine. And City Manager, you're doing it so well. Do you wanna do six, seven, eight, or do you wanna do them all? Or how, how do you wanna break that one up?
Well, let's do six, seven, eight, because I know number nine, if council wants to go there, it's only in a few locations. So six, seven, and eight, again, seven and eight are versions of the same can that we have at Earl Glenview. Eight is wood, which is different from all of them. Potentially a nice aesthetic feature, potentially also a maintenance issue, and harder to resurface over time, or etched in graffiti with a key or sharpie or a, a sharp object. It's harder to repair than repainting. So something to think of. But between six, seven, and eight, any comment from council?
I, I had liked initially the look of eight, and then my, immediately I went to, that seems really easy to deface with graffiti, which is a shame. That, that has to be a number one concern, but I, I, I don't think eight would last long. The six is, i- i- this is gonna sound weird. Six is, is probably one of the least aesthetically pleasing of all the options, but it seems sturdy, and it seems practical. It seemed, it's got a door. It's, it seems like something that's gonna stand up to the rigors of San Mateo Avenue. So that's, that's one that I'm kind of gravitating toward, gravitating toward in this, in this set.
Thank you. Next, who would like to go next? Councilmember Mason?
So I think even just going into this, I, I really liked five, eight, and nine. But I, eight, I just, I'm looking at the report, and, I mean, for $1,200 each, can we maybe just double check and make sure they haven't already thought of graffiti? I mean, maybe, maybe there's, there's gotta be something, because I thought the same thing was, how are we gonna get the graffiti off the wood? But maybe, I don't know, maybe there's some, something on it that's resistant or easy to clean. Can, can we just double check that? Because I do like the aesthetic of eight.
Certainly, we can, we can look into that. One of the things I was articulating was sort of graffiti and the sense of etching something in, like you see on trees, right? People carve into the wood.
Okay. Next person, please.
Mr. Mayor, or is that me?
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, the problem with number six, you have sixty-two, sixty-two pounds of steel compared to number seven, the 192 pounds. So it's probably really thin-walled. So it, it looks short and stocky and tough, but probably not gonna hold up. I would go with seven. Eight would be great in a park, because with the wood, there are not enough trees in our downtown. So it's really gonna stand out kind of funky, like a sore thumb. And we'll get to nine later.
Mr. Salazar?
I think I agree with Tom. You know, six isn't gorgeous, but it does seem very practical compared to the others. Eight is probably the most attractive, but the maintenance concerns are definitely an issue. And it, it seems like number six, too. It, it, the opening is a little smaller than the other ones. And so that, that would help actually with the, the dumping. So you, you're not gonna, you're not as likely to have people bring their, their trash from, from home or from a business and try to stuff it through one of those slots. So you might have less of a problem with, with that. But yeah, I, I guess the, the material would be a concern, if, if it's not as, as sturdy. I, I, I didn't pay attention to the weights like, like Marty did, but that, that's definitely a concern as well. We wanna make sure that it's gonna hold up.
Um, I was gonna say aesthetically, eight, I like, but I do have that concern as far as just, it's being vandalized to some capacity. And so that is a major concern, though I kind of like the imagery. Seven looks very similar, too, but it just, to my eye, doesn't wow me. Not that I need to be wowed by a garbage can, but it just doesn't seem to be as, just doesn't stand out. Six, I, I do, do have some likes about it, because of what Councilmember Hamilton said, but I appreciate the Vice Mayor, as that durability is going to, to matter and count the longevity. So you're, you're kind of, so what you've done, City Manager, is you've got us all on one on the top line, but, but we're kind of going around a little bit on the bottom line. But I think eight comes back to us as far as kind of vandalism, withstand, withhold, etc. I think six, we've been asked just about the weight and the durability. Does anybody wanna see seven even looked at? Seen one no, two no's?
Yeah, I would say no on seven. I, I would, I didn't, I didn't, honestly, didn't even notice the weight, though. We're all weighed of six. And so I, I would, I would like it to still be in consideration, but I would, I would advise staff to, you know, if there, if there's any, if there's any physical examples of them nearby, where we're gonna go look at one in, in real life to see if it, if it is, if it is sturdy or not. Because yeah, I'm, I'm concerned with Vice Mayor, but he brought up some good points there, that, you know, if those are thin-walled, you know, one good kick in the side could, you know, dent it in, if it's not, if it's not very thick. So if it, if it is sturdy, I still like six. But if it's not sturdy, then of course I don't. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Perhaps they have a, 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 a heavy duty version of that. If you look at the cost, at 620, you know, it's, it's way underpriced compared to the other ones. So it's probably pretty flimsy. You know, price generally goes with, with quality. So I did think the one at number seven, which is at Glenview currently, I, I think it's okay, but I, I'm not, I, I'm not, if we can find a number six that's sturdier, then, then I think, I'm hoping that they would make it like that. So let's see, let's see what staff says when they do a little more work on it.
And I did go to, to Glenview Earl Park, and those look fine, and they seem, but again, they're not getting that, the usage as a San Mateo Avenue would. We know that. So, City Manager, did that help you at all, or did that just give you now four garbage cans? You're on mute.
So let's summarize. Five yes. Council likes the aesthetics of six, but concern that the cost being the second lowest and the weight may equate to not being as sturdy. A universal like of the aesthetics of eight, but concern about maintenance and, and of the wood primarily. Seven, which is at Earl Glenview, just sort of not wowing anyone. What, what I'll say about seven and eight is, as far as sort of weight and the gauge of the steel, they appear to be some of the strongest of those that we're showing. And so eight and seven have the same sort of thick gauge steel and, and weigh the most, or seven and eight. We can take a look at a version of six and try and find something similar, and, and certainly five. And then we'll ask the questions about eight, because we certainly understand that council likes eight. Now, let, let me actually ask this question, because while we're looking at the wood, and we know it's wood, it does come in various paint options. So does council like the two-tone? Look to it? And if we could virtually find something that's similar, but is steel, but painted in a way that sort of has that contrast, is that what this, what, what council's reacting to?
I would say yes. One of the things about eight that stands out is that it's not just a, you know, mono-colored blob. It just has a lot more interest.
Correct. Any other thoughts?
Sure. They gotta, they have different colors of it, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think, City Manager, I, I don't think people dislike seven. I mean, I was wondering, said something, but it just, it just looks like it's there. And, and maybe Earl, it didn't look so bad at, at Glenview. But, but I think you're correct in your assessment about the two-tone, I think is maybe appealing to some folks. Councilmember Mason or Salazar?
To the mayor. If possible, if the, whoever's making these, if they could let us know where eight maybe is, we can take a look, just to see how it's standing up, or, you know, if it's been a year or so. I don't know. Just a suggestion. Because I, I'm, I do really like eight. I just am curious to know how it's gonna look in five years.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
Wait, wait. Hold, hold on. Mr. Salazar, anything? Go ahead.
No, not really. I mean, i- i- it is, it is nice looking. So, and we do wanna have a few options. So let, let's see if there's a, some, some evidence out there that it could work for us.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, number nine.
So what I think I've heard about nine is in high traffic, high waste areas, I think we all universally agree that could be near Starbucks. And I think the question is what other areas are sort of high traffic? Potentially near, at, at the corner of Angus and San Mateo Avenue, near Grand Leader and Mari Mar. And, and we can look for other locations. But I, I believe what I've heard from the City Council is look at a Big Belly option in high traffic areas. Or I've heard that from some. I'm, I'm not sure if there is a majority support for that. Cost is, of course, you know, roughly, has shown roughly $4,000. But given that we service five days a week, and given that, I think we've heard that there is overflowing or high levels of garbage on the weekend in those high traffic areas, this is one option that we can certainly consider.
So I, I think you had council willing to look into some in strategically placed locations that would be of value to keep, you know, things cleaner and communities' needs. And one thing I am gonna say, too, is I, you know, do we, do we need as many garbage cans as we have currently? You know, so can it be reduced by two or four or five? You know, I'm not the expert on that. And then again, you want one recyclable, each one of them. So that's doubling what we have currently, because right now we have a garbage can. So just wanna be mindful of that. Do we need recyclables at each of the locations? Or can they be spread further out? Or maybe at the high traffic areas that produce, you know, have the foods and, and other things? And then I'm, sorry, Councilmember Hamilton?
If we're gonna take any, if we're gonna remove a trash can from any location, I would hope that we would use some kind of data, even anecdotal data from Recology and the, and, and staff who are, who are picking up the garbage, and, you know, which ones are typically mostly empty. Or, you know, the, you know, the, if, if it's uniform, that they're almost, they're almost always full, you know, all the way up and down the avenue, then removing any, that wouldn't make that sense. But, but if there's, if there's ones that are lightly used, then sure, we can talk about taking those out. But we would need to know. We would need to have that data.
There are comments on nine, plus any closing. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I would just say nine, a couple things is, I, I'm not sure if that bottom is, can your foot open it? Is it a foot, like a footbed? Is it a foot like a foot pedal? Or is it you have to have, you have to touch it?
I don't know.
Director Tan? I'm not sure if that's a foot opening or not, but no. Yeah, I've only pulled the handle down to dispose my waste.
So I mean, just something like post-COVID, right, world is, you know, the other, all the other cans, you don't have to touch anything. The other thing I would say is these are, I I have seen them and they're definitely get your attention. So I think where we put these is have to be very strategic because they can be very overwhelming because of their size. So to not take away maybe from another project or something else that we're trying to work on. But I think just off the top of my head, like the, I agree with maybe in certain locations where there's more garbage. I do just want to think about the fact that you do have to touch it and that they are very big compared to the others. And I know that just for staff, the. Los Primos Market, the one diagonal from Grand Leader. They have a big garbage problem, there's always garbage overflowing in that location. And so I don't know what can be done about it, I think people are going out and throwing their garbage there, but that's another location. We've got to think about maybe having a a larger locate, a larger garbage can. So. In addition to Starbucks, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
That is indeed a foot pedal. That will open, that will open it automatically and it it appears to be. It I, I don't, it appears to be an option because if you look at slide sixteen that has. A picture of them in real life, those don't have it.
And 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 I guess nowadays you would, should be having that, right? Because you for ADA and what have you, there's got to be a second option or opportunity for that. Okay, City Manager, does that give you enough?
Yeah, so to recap, we will do further investigation on item five, potentially a stronger version of six. Look into eight primarily durability and serviceability of the wood. And if staff determines that it may cause a significant maintenance issue. Look potentially at a version that has a varying, a varying color, color, color pattern. And and look at number nine for. High, high trash areas where there is enough space and definitely if we get them, have the foot pedal option.
Okay, well, thank you, staff, and thank you for council for the discussion. If we can stop sharing the screen. And we will then consider the study session portion over.